Hello, my name is Megan Saffery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Division and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. The Zoom chat feature is modified, so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight is a public hearing on private road naming. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Corbin, and Scootley. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Alves, Fritsch, and more. With seven planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. Would one of the commissioners on Zoom please confirm that you can hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. We are now ready to begin. Chair Corbin.
Thank you. My name is Frank Corbin, and I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of May 14th, 2024. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion from the Planning Commission to approve the agenda as presented.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have a second?
Well, there's an error in the agenda. Do we need to change it?
Oh, okay.
Let me see. I need to change the agenda. I make a motion, we change the agenda with a modification that the next meeting won't be May 14th, it'll be May. Or what day was it?
May 28th.
Yeah, May 28th.
Since you're pointing that out, I also see another error. Sorry, I did not proofread this well enough. Number four, the approval of the meeting notes will be from the last meeting, which was April 23rd, not April 9th. And then the next meeting will be May 28th, and the agenda item is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update.
Okay, the meeting dies for lack of a second, so.
Okay, so make a motion that we change the agenda as said.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And we have a thumbs up from Gretchen.
Jason, can I get your vote, please? Okay, the motion passes with seven yes votes.
Okay. All right. And prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from the April 23rd meeting. Are there any corrections to those meeting notes? Okay, if there are none, I would entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to adopt the minutes as presented.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Laurie, thank you. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye?
The motion passes with seven yes votes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. The next item is public comment. Please note that public comments are different than testimony, so if you have testimony, please save the testimony for later in the in the meeting. Now is the time for public comments on other topics other than the agenda item, which is private road naming. Megan, has anyone signed up for to provide public comment? Or any hands raised in Zoom?
There's no one in the room who has signed up to provide public comment. On Zoom, if you would like to provide comment, please unmute yourself now. Okay, I see none.
Okay. All right, well, tonight's first agenda item is public hearing on private road naming. I don't think it's probably necessary for us to worry about setting a time limit on testimony tonight, so we'll go ahead and proceed in an orderly fashion. I would like to ask everyone's cooperation, please. We'll start with a few specific questions, then a brief staff presentation, followed by questions from the commissioners, and finally take public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who believes that the public was not notified of the hearing in a timely manner? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom or your hand in the room, and we will acknowledge you. Megan?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have a disclosure to make? If so, please raise your hand and provide your disclosure when called upon. Okay, none in the room? Megan, do we have any online? Okay, all right, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Mindy Brooks, Community Development. So again, the information for tonight's hearing was provided to the Planning Commission at the end of March, and you had a workshop on April 9th regarding this. The notice of hearing was published on April 30th. The materials are available online for the commissioners and the public. Tonight, we also have joining us tonight Jennifer Libby Jones with 911. So if you have any questions related to this, you also received testimony from 911 as well as testimony from our Public Works GIS department that was transmitted to you yesterday. So here's quickly, we're going to do a short presentation because you've heard this before, so we'll do a little bit of history, the current requirements, the proposed amendments, and then if you have any questions for our county departments, you can ask those. Next slide. Okay, so a little bit of history. Countywide readdressing, readdressing was initiated in the 1970s when rural routes were eliminated. Over time, we've actually taken many different approaches to naming private roads. Each approach has had problems over time. There was a solution in the 1990s. This was known as the dashed addressing approach. It was devised to assign subunit numbers based on how far away you are from the the public road and which direction it's branching out. Theoretically, this allowed for some orderly assignment of the subunit numbers, but in practice, it's very confusing. The image is an example of the dash road naming on there. So in the center of the image, you see a private road that extends off of Jackson Highway. The private road is a dashed road without a name, so the addresses all are something Jackson Highway, right? The highlighted lots have a zero address associated with them. The zero address lot at the bottom, if you were to look really closely at that, it's three lots up a private drive, which is also off of a private drive. Same as the next one up. So you have private drives off of private drives. This is very confusing that all of these are zero Jackson Highway. Emergency services are not able to actually, you know, to figure out which house you're looking at. Also a problem for getting your Amazon deliveries. So this is a current issue that we have. Next slide. So currently, the process is an actual road name, not a dashed road name, but an actual road name is required when private roads are required, and that happens when you have a land division of three or more lots. So we do require that you name your road. Again, this is about when the lots are created, not when they're developed. So we require that during a land division when three or more lots are created, not when they're developed. There are requirements about what you can provide as a name. We're actually not proposing to change the what you can use as a name section of it. This is better than the dashed road naming process that we had in the 90s, but there are still some issues. Next slide, please. So first, during simple segs, we can create three lots or more, but there's no requirement for site addressing, so there's no requirement for private road naming during a simple seg. So if the sites then are developed later, and that's what triggers building that private road, there's no name associated with it. So that's one of the things we're trying to fix. Again, this is because we do the private road naming when lots are created, right? So there's a disconnect there that we're trying to fix. Also, the requirements do not apply to extensions of private roads, and the requirements are inconsistently applied to spurs off of private roads. So this example that I'm giving you here, this is the hideaway lane situation where there was a private road name, it was applied, and then there was a spur off of it, and it got the same name, and there was a spur off of that, and it got the same name. So again, if you were to call for 911 services on hideaway lane, which one are we talking about, right? You could literally be able to like see someone's house on fire and be on the wrong road at that point because they're all hideaway lane. And then again, this makes deliveries very difficult for people. We actually get quite a few complaints about the inability to get deliveries to the right to the right address. This specific example, we are working with the property owners on. So this example, we're not going to fix with the code amendments that we're proposing. We just don't want this to happen again. So we're trying to avoid this in the future. Next slide. So what are we trying to fix? We want to make sure that when three or more lots are created through any land division, including simple segs, the sites need to be addressed, and we need to get that that road name in there. So that is one of the amendments, is to make sure it applies to all land divisions that create three or more lots. Just to be clear, just like it is today, so during the simple seg, that doesn't mean you have to build the road. We're not asking for that. You can still not build the road, but we do need the site, each site addressed with a private road name. If there is a spur being created off of a private road, there will now be a requirement that the spur have a new name. You cannot do the same name for a spur. And if you are extending a private road that is currently a dashed road, you are going to need to name the entire road. Right? So that's the only time where we're actually fixing a past problem. Everything else is about not creating any more problems, but that is one of those situations where we would fix the past problem of the dashed road because that road is going to be extended. Everything else is staying the same. We're not changing any of the policies around how you apply for what you can choose for your road names or anything like that. Those are all staying the same. So that's a quick summary of that. I just put I just put a blank slide here in case if in case if our county departments want to say anything, but I think Jennifer is probably just here to answer questions if you have any of 911, of one of our emergency service providers. So with that, I will close my presentation.
Thank you, Mindy. All right, it is now open for commissioners to ask questions of staff. This is different than discussion, which will come after testimony. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff, or are you ready to move on to public testimony? All right, Mr. Scootley.
It's not a big question, but when it gets renamed, who actually covers the cost of, you know, redoing the addresses? And the bank cards and.
Yeah, so the the individual property owners will need to make the adjustments to their, whatever they need to do for the address renaming of those sites.
So one guy comes in at the end and has a house built, and then he's.
Not a house built. They're dividing the property to create lots.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, it's not about building houses.
No, no, I understand.
In the circumstance that we looked at it for that first one where that's a dashed road, and there are many undeveloped lots, none of developing those lots is going to trigger this. It's when you create the land division, when they, yes, and when they create the land division, yes, the property owners will have to, each of them will have to come into compliance with the new address.
Yeah, I understand that. So, you know, developer comes in and he creates one new lot. So everybody else has got to change?
That's right. In order to we in order to fix any of the dashed road naming, we need some triggers, and that is one trigger that we're putting in right now.
I'm all in favor of getting this up to date now rather than later because it's just deal with it. But that's got to be expensive.
I mean, I've changed my address a number of times. I guess it's it's in the, you know, relative to how much you think it is to change your address.
Is the procedure that you then have to go to all the owners and get a vote on changing it?
You need 50% of the voters to agree to the road name.
So that would be the the person that's seeking the division that would be doing that most likely.
That is correct, and if they can't get agreement, the county will step in and will choose the road name.
Oh, I see. Okay, so it's going to happen one way or another.
Right. We would love very much for the property owners to agree. Right, you guys can pick up your name if you don't like it. I have a long list of really ridiculously funny names I'm ready to apply.
Hey, Bob?
Yeah, it's really sort of the same issue. I think it's perfect that we're fixing it. I think it's been a bad thing for a long time, the dashes. I live at 123-16, and when I was told it's a distance down the road, well, my neighbor whose driveway is further down the road than me on the left side, he's got the odd numbers. He's 123-7. And so even when it was, and it was actually, it wasn't a mistake made by the county because I went and checked. It was actually a like a boundary line adjustment that moved the driveway back after the guy had already had his number. So we get a lot of people delivering to the wrong place and and so my questions are these, same one really is, I brought it up to my wife, actually. She said, what are you going to talk about tonight? I said, oh, we're talking about road naming. She said, like our driveway, get rid of this 123 stuff, the dash. And she said, what happens if that last person comes in? I said, I think we're going to change everything. The debt, the first and the second people are going to change. And she said, well, that's stupid. And I went, oh, I'll bring that up. I said, what are you thinking? And she goes, well, it just seems like that's really hard to get all that done. And so I was thinking about that, and I thought about, you know, we've lived with this problem a long time, and I wonder if maybe on that issue, there's, we look at that one issue on if the third lot or the fourth lot triggers it, we suggest, we explain why it's better for public safety. But we don't demand, and we got a lot of stuff to deal with. But anyway, that's my thought on that. Other than that, I like everything about it.
Thank you, Bob. Roger Moore, do you have anything, sir?
Nope.
Okay, Gretchen?
No.
Okay, Jason?
Nope.
Okay. My only comment is echoing what others have said. I think that this is a great although overdue opportunity to fix something that's needed to be fixed for a long time. Beside my property is a gravel road that has five people or five residences on it. There are two or three different naming conventions on it. I brokered the idea with them to see what kind of interest they would be in renaming that road or putting a name on it. One person was in favor, four against. So the inconvenience of changing an address seems to be problematic for, at least in my situation. Problematic. I too have changed addresses a number of times over the years, and it is a matter of time, but fortunately, it's not a trigger that's going to be forced upon everybody. It's going to be on a per-location basis based on land divisions and so forth. So I think that this is manageable moving forward. I agree with the public safety aspect, that it's imperative that we try to bring our house in order to aid our 911 workers and everyone else in emergency services, even our delivery drivers. Having worked as a delivery driver for a short period of time, I know the frustration of trying to find an address that doesn't appear to exist in anybody's GPS systems, especially at night when it's raining, and people want their packages in time for Christmas. So, you know, it is very, very important that we try to bring people up to compliance. I did bring up last meeting, I think it was, or the meeting before, an idea to propose to the county commissioners that we offer perhaps maybe an incentive to waive the $35 processing fee, you know, and go with a public education campaign if the commissioners are willing to do that. And much like they're doing right now with the pet adoption fees, you know, so anything to try to incentivize people to do it voluntarily, I think would be good, and I'd like to maybe put in another plug for that, that hopefully we can get that in the transmittal.
Yeah, so after you guys get through this whole thing, we can talk about the transmittal letter.
Okay, all right. All right, so that's all that I have.
Frank, I've got a question.
Oh, sure.
For, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, or I don't have a paper, so I didn't write it down.
Yeah, Jennifer Libby Jones, 911 Director.
Hi, thanks for your testimony on that. Yeah, that kind of made me do some thinking. I was wondering when you said that, you know, it's causing a problem. Could you explain what what is the problem, the frequency of the problem, the severity of the problem? Is this a big problem or kind of a just an annoying problem?
It probably is is an annoying problem, but what the main issue is it's delaying service. So it's actually delaying the process that the dispatcher goes through to enter the address into our computerated dispatch system. Now we're talking a delay of seconds, but then you add that to the delay of now our responder is trying to drive to that location and is confused and can't locate it. Now you're compounding that into minutes potentially. So I think it's more of that process. It's extra training when we bring new people on. As far as the frequency, it's hard to judge. You know, we could probably say, you know, it's 20% of all our addresses in the county, then probably we encountered about 20% of the time, but but that's more difficult to to give a number to.
And so if if your emergency person gets out there and can't figure it out, then he's calling back to you, and what are you doing? How are you trying to figure it out?
We're calling the caller back, and we're asking them, hey, is there a landmark or something that you can tell us that we could locate your address better?
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, kind of what is your feeling? Is this something that really should be done totally now? Like, do you like the idea that we're going to do it piecemeal and let people do it whenever somebody develops? Or would you, do you think it's severe enough that we need to step in and fix it now, period?
I don't necessarily think it's severe enough. Again, I don't have the numbers on like what percentage of addresses we're looking at. I have been through readdressing before in the first county I lived in. We went from rural routes to traditional addressing, and it is a, you know, a process for people. It's people don't like change, so anything that you can introduce gradually is usually good if you have that option, but I would say this is a good approach that they're proposing right now.
You like this one?
Yeah, can I just, I just want to clarify, the only thing that we're that we're proposing to fix retroactively is when an extension of a road occurs. Right. We're not proposing to go in and rename all the dashed roads at this time, so the vast majority.
But we could.
You you guys, right, you guys can make the motion the way you want to make the motion. But at this time, what we've proposed is don't let it keep happening. So fix that side of it, and then the one trigger that we've proposed is extensions would then trigger renaming that particular road. So, yeah.
Well, by besides reading the testimony and kind of thinking, well, if it's this big of a problem, maybe we should just fix the problem. And then I also thought, well, that would get rid of the adversarial issues that are going to be coming up when people have to fix the problem. But if it's, if you feel that this is a reasonable way to do it, like if you don't have people out there, you know, dying while the ambulance is looking for him, then and, you know.
Yeah, that's the big unknown is, you know, will that happen?
Right.
I mean, that's the least of the problem.
The what, the dying?
The third person pissing off his neighbors because he's going to make them change their address is probably the second or the third fight they're going to have
Right.
since we've gone down this simple seg land development model, so.
Well, I was just thinking like Frank said, when you have to start going to your neighbors and saying,
Oh, I don't think.
They're not going to want to do it.
Well.
But I guess the community vote can step in and say, well, we are going to do it.
Well, let's come back.
This is the name.
The the extension question is not done yet.
Yeah.
That we're, that's, I appreciate Mindy putting the name on it. It's when an extension happens, what? So let's hold that one for a minute. I have a different question while we're thinking of that. Yeah, I haven't quite, I've been pontificating, but I haven't even asked my question yet.
Okay.
I'm interested in critical areas. One of the things then, simple segs in the old days is is nobody took a look at that. I don't think that's been the problem, been the policy. I'd like to somebody to speak to. When somebody walks in for a simple seg right now, they're going to be asked some things. I hopefully there's critical area issues, and now we're talking about roads, that they're going to have to have named it and thought about where it goes if they're going to give you an address. Could you speak to that?
Lee, do you want to, sorry, take the microphone back and speak to the, because
I'm not sure that critical areas has much to do with this, but let me, I bet that's a great question, so let me get back to you. Let me look up some stuff and get back to you today.
Let me clarify the question. If we're going to ask them to give you the addresses, they're going to have to create the road. They're going to have to tell us where the road's going. So I assume that gives us the opportunity to keep them out of critical areas and not do a stupid development.
So they've always had to show us where the easement is on the property. So during a simple seg, that has that has already happened, already does happen. We don't require the road to be constructed, and until this proposal, we've also not required that that easement that will be a private road
Thank you.
has been named. So so that is part of the current process, if that kind of gets.
So the easement's there, we know where the roads go, and so they can give you the addresses.
They can.
And create that. Okay.
Yeah. So it's what we're doing with that one is really just closing a loophole that shouldn't be there because our policy is clear, if you create three lots, you're supposed to name the road, and we're just closing that one up so that that is true under all circumstances.
Well, that, I don't know how long. I'm guessing if I look at simple segs that have been created in Lewis County, many of them are out there without an easement associated with it.
Yeah, so I don't know the exact date when we made the last change to the to it. I'm looking at Lee again.
Sorry, I'm trying to do, I'm trying to answer your other question. So your question, you're thinking that simple segs were created without dedication of an easement on the face of the that, no, you have to have, that is one thing that you don't have to build the road, but you do have to provide access. So your access.
How long?
How long has that been the case?
It has always been the case. We can't create lots that don't have access.
So the easement's always been there. We've always known we were. Do we look at that, where that road's going, through and over a creek or?
Okay, it's reviewed.
Okay.
Can I, can I come back to his other question?
Yes.
So Bob, you also wondered if through a simple seg review, did we look at critical areas to make certain that a road or some other thing wasn't being built? That we were make, we were for the best, for the as best as we could, we were creating buildable lots. So you were wondering about, do we look at critical areas? So yes, Karen does look at critical areas. So she has her simple seg review where she's focused a lot on the map and the drawing. Then she also has the land development review, which those that review looks at zoning, floodplain, the watershed, if there's any critical areas on it. And so those become the conditions of development. So when you put the two together, you have the drawing, which has its review, and then she has the conditions from the LDR that get placed on the drawing. So I'm looking at one right now. One of the conditions was the land contains a mapped type N stream and has a 75-foot buffer on each land where it's side of the ordinary high water mark. So that is putting the person on the notice. Was that your question?
Yeah, that's perfect. So then I guess I'm going to wrap up and say that from a safety standpoint, I think getting rid of the dashes is perfect. From the extensions dash point, I think we should do something to say if it's a rewrite is, if a name change is required because that extension is going to create goofiness, then do it. But if it's just going to add to the extension and and put like a dash 23 past my house, seems like that's going to save the county a lot of trouble because, you know, the person comes in, wants to develop that, and he can't get his neighbors to agree to it, and the county's in the middle of that, and I just don't see why we.
Yeah, so so let me, let me ask if there are any other questions, and then sorry, I'm a little, I'm a little Robert rule just for a second. I know I get annoying when I do my Robert's rules. We should, we should put a motion on the table before we deliberate the things. I do have a proposed motion that we can put up that I have that I've edited based on the conversation that you guys had. I already edited it. So and then we can go into talking about how you want to make that motion work.
Thank you. I was just going to mention for the record before I let Jeff ask his question that there was no individual signed up to provide public testimony. So that's why I skipped over that section. Okay. All right. So Jeff, your question, please?
It's pretty simple, actually. I'm not familiar, but what is the process within the county of doing all this readdressing? I mean, if we dumped everybody on there right now, you guys would that be too much?
We are not proposing readdressing at this time. We are proposing.
We are not proposing readdressing at this time. We are proposing that when land divisions happen, all of them, including simple segs, that they name the road. And when an extension happens, that that gets renamed. So that's all we're proposing at this time.
Well, right, but, you know, say, say a division has, has, has a new road name, everybody changes their addresses. Doesn't that go through you guys somehow, some way?
Yes. When that extension happens, if this is passed and the extension happens and we require the road to come through, they will apply with us like they do to get a county road name. We have requirements around that that stay the same. And then we would change the road name.
I'm still not saying this right. I don't, I don't have any idea how many dashed roads there are out there, but I get the feeling that there's quite a few. And 20%.
Well, no, that was a guess. Let me just be very clear.
Okay. Yeah, I got you.
20%. Yeah, we haven't done the count. I don't know how many are out there. Yeah, we are not proposing to rename all of those.
Well-
And many of them, many of them will never have-
What happens when a person comes in for a new address, which is exactly what would be happening. It might be five people, but tell them, tell them how that works.
Sure. So let me just be clear. In, it would take that road being extended because someone was creating three more lots and needs to extend that road. So that's going to be episodic, not a deluge. It's going to be a few a year kind of a situation that will come through.
Yeah. I was, the point I was getting to, we could either choose to rename all the properties right now and make life a little bit easier for, uh, in the emergencies, so to speak. But it'd be much more difficult on you because it would be a big deal.
You are absolutely correct. And we have not done the research to figure out how much time and effort that would take because we've not proposed to do that. So if we want to-
You don't have any free time to do that?
Yeah. If we want, if we want to figure out how much effort that would take, we would need to go back and determine if that is something we would do. My, my staff recommendation to you is if that is something you would like us to consider, is to go ahead and approve this to go to the commissioners. And in the transmittal letter, let them know that you think that we should take that step and we can come back and do that as another effort.
My, my personal opinion, and it's just an opinion, is that we're going at this the right way and we're trying to figure it out as we go along. And we should probably be careful as we go.
Thank you. Okay. I wanted to give the commissioners online an opportunity to weigh in before we move to a motion. So Jason, do you have any questions for staff?
I do not.
Thank you. Gretchen?
No, no, this all sounds good to me.
Okay. Sorry, I couldn't hear. Roger?
Uh, no questions for me.
Okay. All right. And Steph, I did fail to ask you if you wanted your opening remarks and presentation to be added to the testimony.
Yes. And I will look, Lee's going to nod and say yes, and so is Jennifer. Libby Jones is going to say yes, they will. Testimony had their information add to the record.
All right. Thank you. All right. And Mindy, do you have a potential motion for us to consider?
I do. And I did actually just update it as we were talking. So the motion that I was going to put in front of you before says, I move to recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve the amendments related to private road naming as presented in the March 29 staff report. I've added a comma, except to not recommend that the extension of an existing dashed road be required to, it should be to be renamed. Sorry, it's, I worded it quickly. So what I'm suggesting, as you guys know, is that the motions are completely up to you. We can propose the motion. So you can, you can say that you move that the BOCC approve it as it was presented to you. Or if you would like to, you could say as presented, except for don't do the road extension component of it. Again, I sort of messed up the end of the, some grammatical things there. It is up to you how you want to create and state your motion. And keep in mind with your motions, if it's motioned and seconded and we talk about it and you decide you don't want to approve the motion that you've made, that's fine. You can all say no and enter a new motion in. So you're not stuck with a single motion just because that's what somebody has proposed, but that's how you should start the deliberation.
Okay. All right. Um, let's see. I will open it up then to the commissioners for a motion.
They're staring at Bob. Everyone's staring at Bob.
Microphone?
Can I just talk to my friends here on the board? So I want the last sentence to say, except, you know, extensions will be allowed where they make sense. Right? If an extension is going to run us down a road, that- Yeah.
So, so let me just, let me just be clear. In terms of the, the code, this needs to be non-discretionary. We either require an extension to result in renaming the road or we don't. It's going to have to be a non-discretionary-
Should happen is any thirds and fourths remaining out there in simple segs, right, that have yet to be developed.
So this isn't, so let me-
We're not going to get dashes going-
Right.
Like 15 dashes because of what you said, they're going to have to open another development.
Right. So the way the extension would work, if, if you want to pass that is there's a dashed road name now, it's got lots on it, right? And it, but it ends and there's property beyond the end of that road, right? Probably a 20 acre or larger lot. That lot comes in to divide into three or more lots. And when they do that, they're going to have to extend the road out. That is a current requirement.
Oh yeah, we need to change-
The proposal is when that happens, the whole name must be, the whole road has to be renamed.
What about the case of the third person right now in a situation where one and two are dashed, but the third guy buys a five acre lot?
If they're not dividing it, it doesn't trigger that. It's about dividing and creating three lots. You, if there's a piece of, yeah, yeah, there's a piece of property that is just not developed, that won't trigger it.
That person gets to continue a dash if he-
They get their weird dash situation.
Go back to the original way you wrote it then.
Just if you want to do that motion, just stop at the comma. Don't read past, don't read the except, just read to the, the comma.
Anybody else have any?
Yeah. So remember to microphone and microphone, microphone.
No side conversations.
Microphone.
Microphones, please.
Okay. I appreciate staff spending time clarifying a brain lock that I had in my head, but was important to me. And I wanted to get it right because I live on it and I have developed it. So I really appreciate you taking the time. So as written and the way you've thought about it is going to be just fine. So I'm going to make that motion. I move to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the amendments related to private road naming as presented in the March 29 staff report, period.
Is there a second?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
No, not right now.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lori. Now we can have discussion. Jeff?
This is attached to the amendments, but yet we don't have the amendments in front of us.
You received the amendments on the, for the, ahead of, sorry, the March 29th, ahead of the workshop. The amendments have not changed. So when we sent the reminder for this one, we gave you another link back to where those amendments are. So we've sent, we've sent the amendments out through two emails.
So this gets attached to the amendments.
This is telling the Board of County Commissioners to adopt those amendments. So this is the motion. We will then create a letter of transmittal that will, we can discuss, right? Because you guys had a few more comments you wanted to make about it. The letter of transmittal gets attached to the amendments.
I'm, I'm wondering, anybody trying to follow this outside of here, us, it's going, huh?
Right. So what they received in the notice for tonight's hearing was go to this webpage to look at the amendments, which are part of the staff report. That was in the hearing that went out on April 30th. And that is what you received in the past two emails is go here to look at the amendments. So the amendments have been online since, uh, March 29th. And everything is just pointed to go look at those amendments. So they're completely available. What you're doing is saying, Board of County Commissioners, approve or don't these amendments. We will create a letter of transmittal that will attach, literally attach to the amendment. So the package that the board receives will be your letter of transmittal and the attachments. And they will also receive it electronically. They will not receive a hard copy unless if they ask for it.
Mindy, can I clarify?
Yeah.
I, when you say amendments, you're talking about amending the code. You wrote a staff report that has amended code. It's not an, an additional amendment beyond that, if that's what you were thinking.
No, I understood what she was talking about, but we're, we're voting on something we don't have in front of us.
Yeah. So we can, we can pull it up and you can pull it up. I, I, as a matter of just going forward, if you would prefer that we print and bring the hard copy for these meetings, we can absolutely print. We just assume everybody pulls it up online, reads it online, that you've read it, you're familiar with it. Happy to make a hard copy if that's better for you. Totally up to you. And we'll bring an individual, whatever, whatever works for you. But it is online. Megan can pull it up now if you want to look at it online or you can pull it up on your computer in front of you.
Okay. I want to, while we're doing that, can we go to somebody that's online to see if they have anything for deliberations?
And Megan's just pulling up the, the staff report here. So you can see what it, what it looks like. So when you, this is what you received before your workshop on April 9th and you received another link to this. So there's a cover that is the staff report that summarizes everything. And each of those attachments are the amendments to the code. So when you're reading those, those are underlined, strike through amendments to the code. So there's commentary that explains it. And then the next page shows the code itself. And the underlines are new and the strike throughs are removed. And so this is what we will always transmit to you when we're doing code amendments, but we will always transmit it electronically unless you specifically would like a hard copy. So we just anticipate that you will read it online on your own computer before you come to the meeting.
Okay. Jason, do you have anything?
And there are many pages. She's just sitting on one page. So we could scroll through all of it. Reading it right now is going to be a little hard.
Go ahead, Jason.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Gretchen?
No, um, I, I'm probably going to vote in line with Bob and have the period where the period was and not with the exception stuff at the end. So that sounds good to me.
Okay. Thank you. Roger?
Yeah, I, I, I think we're good the direction we're going. It all needs to be fixed at some point. And if we start putting exceptions in there and, and piecemealing it like that, then it's just going to take us longer to get to the finish line, I think. So, um, yeah, I think we're good the way we're going.
I think that the discussion has been good for my two bits worth here. Um, I think I try to reserve micromanaging the department as much as possible because if anybody knows what their workload is like and what they anticipate, it would be you guys. So thank you for, for all the hard work and I think for a well-presented motion. So one more round of deliberations. Lori?
Well, I was just thinking that I, I was, I was, I was asking Mindy to clarify to everyone what you guys do when somebody comes in and asks for an address. But essentially what I was just thinking is that you determine where the approach is, then it goes to GIS and they somehow put it into your system. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, if, if there's already a road-
Yeah.
And the person is developing, they come in and they fill out the application for an address. The road's already named, we assign an address, it goes in the GIS system. It's a pretty simple thing.
Really is. And if they're coming in piecemeal like that, I don't think it would add a, a huge burden. I think the bigger problem that we have here is people on the road having to get together and do a consensus. But if, if it's mandated, they have to do it anyway. Well, then the question won't be, do you guys want to do this? It'll be, we have to do this. What do you want the name to be? And then they can fight about that. But either way, who's going to, who would handle it in the county? Just, um-
It will come through our, our department.
Okay.
So it would come through during that, um, during that division, when they're dividing.
Okay.
That's when we'd say, okay, well, you have to extend the road. It's an extension of a private road that triggers this requirement. You property owner need to get this, that requires 50% agreement for the name. If that-
How long do you think, uh, how long do you think that we would give the property owners on the road to come to consensus before you'd force them? Because if I'm trying to divide, I'm not going to be excited about sitting there for a year.
So if it's part of a land division, uh, the planner, which will likely be Karen, would put that as a condition of approval. So along with whatever other conditions of approval come with that land division, you would be working on all of those at the same time. And I believe you have a year or more to get it done. So it's, it's, um, part of the conditions of approval.
Hmm.
Along with all the other conditions of approval.
Is not changing. That's still, but only if now applying for simple segs.
So let me, let me say if I think what you're saying. Okay. So, uh, I'm going to divide my property into two and I go in-
Three. It has to be three.
Okay. And, well, I was thinking if I was at the end of the road, but it, okay. So I'm dividing into three. And then, uh, the county looks it over, sees if I met all the criteria. Then they send me back a letter, a preliminary saying, if you do all these things, we will give you approval. And so you're saying one of those things is going to be get my neighbors to agree on a rename. In, in a year or something.
Yes. And if they, and if their neighbors aren't going to sign it, then the county will sign the name.
Oh, no, I don't like that idea.
I wonder, I'm smiling because that's the least of their worries. The first thing that's going to happen is the road's going to widen out to 22 feet.
But that's, that, that's the last guy's problem.
I know, but he's going to, but these people are going to get the, the hint that they don't have a lot of say in this. That road's getting widened whether they like it or not. So they may as well put a name on it. I guess the address is the only-
Well, the biggest problem that I have is, 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 you know, the, the different things on the preliminary are usually fairly easy to solve. You know, you, you come up with an address and you, um, do the percolates or something like that. Well, so you get that done in four weeks. You've already got your $4,000 sitting there with your application. You've done your percolates, you dug your well, you've done all this stuff. And now you got to wait for a year.
This is not related to a short plat. You already have to do that in a short plat.
I was just going to say-
When you say percolates, I'm thinking you're talking about a short plat.
But, but I'm just saying that all those things that could be on a preliminary, you can get done pretty quick.
What it comes down to is the simple segs is the only one that doesn't require this.
Okay, Jeff?
So we're trying to make them consistent for fire and safety issues and Amazon.
Sorry, I thought I heard a period at the end of that. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Jeff, you've been very patient.
I'm a very patient person. Um, so this is just a work in progress anyway, right? These amendments, if someone has a big upset over them, could still request, uh, changes, additions, more amendments.
They would hopefully be here to testify if they have issues. They will have one more crack at it, which is formal testimony to the Board of County Commissioners.
But there is a process for people to speak up if something's not-
Absolutely. Here, we always have at least one hearing with you and at least one hearing with Board of County Commissioners. So there will be another crack at it if people don't like whatever you propose to go forward. But once the county commissioners make that decision, unless if it's appealed, which has to be appealed on law, not because you don't like it, then it goes into effect immediately upon.
Lee, clarify what you said that the, the, this is only for simple segs, that short plats actually require this now. Are you saying they require you to go to your neighbors and have them rename?
There is a naming, you have to name your, or there is a addressing naming piece of short, of the short plat in the land divisions.
Yeah, but you don't have to go to the neighbors and get them to change theirs.
We actually have and have started doing that because of life safety issues. We can't make those findings with, um, some of the addressing conventions. So the more complicated, I don't think you've ever been involved in one of these, but we have, there are land divisions now that are coming in that are off of branches, off of branches, off of branches of roads. And so we're telling them you have to deal with this to get safely.
Been your experience then, are they getting it done quickly or are they doing like what we're discussing?
They have other issues, as Bob said, bigger issues than- They have other issues, as Bob said, bigger issues than this one. So it's, it's not been a big problem for them.
In the hideaway lane example, we are participating in that conversation because it can get tricky with the neighbors to try and choose a name, right? Everybody wants their last name. Let's just say, nobody's gonna agree to whose last name it's gonna be. We will step in and we will give you Bunny Road. Congratulations.
It's a carrot and stick approach. You will do it.
Or we'll name it. I think your concern is you're worried that this could hold up the process. And if this is the only thing that they're not getting, my recommendation to, to the applicant would be go talk to your neighbors. And the minute they say we're not gonna sign off of that, you come back to us. And let us know, I'm not gonna be able to fulfill that condition of approval because I can't get 50% to sign off. So then we can step in and say, great, your name is X.
And we can perhaps, um, we do have some discretion on how we present the options in the staff report. So Karen could be clear to say, Lori, you have to name the road. You, um, go out to your neighbors X amount of time, or we'll come in and we'll name it for you. So that might be a way to help facilitate.
Time is making me feel better if you say something like that in the preliminary. You have, you know, if-
Or at your request, if you can't do this. I mean, we can, that's part of, um, so we're writing the code and we have been talking with staff about how to implement the code. But as the further along we get in implementing, the more we realize there are things we need to talk about. So we can certainly take the implementation piece back to staff and say, here's the code, here's what came up, how are you gonna do this? And to give them guidance on how to do this. But they, you know, they need the code first before they can write the guidance.
Jason, what do you think about this?
Lori, can I just make one more suggestion? This is the type of thing where if you feel strongly that we need guidance, that makes this expeditious, but you still think we should pass this code, let's talk about the transmittal and let's put into that transmittal those things that are outside of it, like the encouraging, like, could we waive a fee for a while and encourage lots of people to come in and all those kind of other X things that aren't codified? Because we write a lot of policy and procedure interpretations. We have a whole file of policy and procedure interpretations. So what Lee is saying is when we go through implementation, we often write more of those. And that can help inform our internal policies and procedures, like suggesting, go out to them twice. If you can't get agreement, we'll name it.
Can we discuss that?
Yeah, after we vote on the motion, then we can talk about the transmittal.
Well, I mean, do, do we, does anybody but me think that would be important to be in the transmittal? Because that'd change how I vote.
Clarify what you want in the transmittal. Tell me again.
Clarifying that there is some, some language or policy that, that directs the county to direct the applicant to go and approach the neighbors for the new thing. And if not, there's some time limit where the county takes over so that I'm not waiting for a year.
That makes sense.
Okay.
That makes sense. The burden can't be on, I mean, if it's a procedure and then people say, I don't want to do the procedure, well, I don't care about that.
Okay, I think-
Well, there's gonna be people that will have bought, bought a piece of property that are dividing this and paying interest at 8%. And, and go in a whole year waiting for, for the neighbor to say, I wanna get, you know, nobody wants to change their checks.
Asking your neighbors for something they don't want anyway, probably isn't gonna work.
No, no brainer.
Okay, let's, let's continue the discussion on the transmittal, uh, in just a few minutes. If we could go ahead and, and move to a vote, I want to give one more opportunity for Roger, Jason and Gretchen to chime in in case they had something that came up at the last minute.
I have nothing.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't have anything. I mean, I, I do agree that there has to be some kind of procedure that forces, you know, the issue, um, you know, can't allow somebody to hold up that process. Um, so I don't know where the right place to put that is exactly. But yeah, there needs to be some, some recourse that somebody would have, uh, so they're not getting held up for no apparent reason with no, no way to resolve it.
Thank you, Jason. Gretchen?
Yeah, um, it just, it sounds like this might belong in the, in the nuance and the explanation with the transmittal letter and maybe not something that we vote on. Leave that up to the, to the, to the county to, to figure out how they're gonna make that work. But it certainly does seem like an important detail that, um, would be important for the commissioners to hear about coming from us. I would support that language in the transmittal.
Okay. And I agree with the sentiments raised on the, on the commission. So, uh, let's go ahead and move to a vote. Then we will promptly move into discussion about the transmittal letter. So-
Put the motion back up. Is that possible?
Okay.
Boom.
All right. So the motion that's on the floor now, or on the table, that keeps disappearing. Okay, the motion is to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the amendments related to private road naming as presented in the March 29th staff report. All right? All right. Megan, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Corbin?
Did we get a second?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You, you seconded it.
Oh, very good.
Uh, I vote aye.
Commissioner Spogen?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Alves?
Aye.
Commissioner Fritsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
And Commissioner Scootley?
Aye.
Motion passes with seven yes and zero no votes.
Okay, this concludes the hearing on private road naming. Mindy, should we go to the transmittal now or?
Yeah, let's talk about transmittal now because it feels like that's appropriate. I did also just want to mention one other thing, um, related to implementation of this kind of stuff. We have a process team that meets twice a month. It is open to the public and we have been discussing and will continue to discuss private road naming. So after we've come up with a transmittal, like, Commissioner Spogen, if you want to track this and see how we're gonna do the implementation, we can get the invites over to you. You'll see the agendas, you can pop in. I mean, I, I can see the, the concern you have on your face. So I just want you to be aware that even though you're not voting on that, you don't have to like fall away from the process to see how we do implementation because we will continue to discuss those with process team. So, anyway, but yes, let's move into our transmittal.
Okay, all right. So, um, well, let's pick the low hanging fruit first. So was my idea, um, a meeting or two ago to, um, uh, for the county commissioners to please consider an option like they're doing with the, with the, um, animal control right now, waiving the fee for a certain length of time to encourage adoption or to encourage people, uh, to, um, voluntarily rename their roads that they currently have that are not complying now.
What's the fee of renaming?
It's $35.
I know, but is it a, when you make an application to rename a road?
Yeah, there's a form. Mindy sent a form out to us. Go ahead.
It's part of the package, yeah. So there's a fee associated with it. So I think the recommendation was maybe, you know, say for the next six weeks or whatever, we'll waive that fee to try and encourage people with dashed addressing to come in and make the change.
Yeah. So I was, I was thinking 90 days or something. Microphone? Microphone?
I think it's an honorable intention, but, uh, uh, probably not worth the effort for how many people would move for $35 on an address change.
Roger?
Yeah, I think for that to be beneficial, we'd probably have to take it a few steps further because there would have to be an education piece involved with that. Because if you just tell them, we're gonna waive the fee, well, they're gonna ask why waive the fee? Well, why do I want to change my address? Those kinds of things. So there's that, that education piece, um, I think would be good. But then the other aspect of it, um, piggybacking on the 911 stuff, um, labeling these addresses, physically having the, the addresses on the house, which is also an added cost. So I think there would be multiple layers to that. Um, I think if we can hit those marks, I think it would be worthwhile, but it's gonna be a matter of who's gonna take that on and who's gonna pay for it. But I think it's a, a step in the right direction to at least to start that discussion. So that's my take.
Yeah, point well taken. Um, my intent was to, you know, make the proposal to the county commissioners. Then it's up to them if they wanted to do something and how they would implement it. That would be between them and staff. But, you know, you raised some very valid points, Roger, and things that I had thought about as well. It, you know, but again, what they're doing with the animal control is they're, they're proposing the waiving of a fee because the population of their dogs and other animals are quite high. And so to relieve the stress uh, from their facility, you know, the proposal was made and, um, adopted. I don't know if they're still in, in the, um, waiving of the fee period right now or not. But, yeah, I don't know. But anyway, it, it has, it has provided a means where the discussion could be had, the education could be provided that would encourage people to do it. And then just even a $35 fee sometimes is just, you know, it, sometimes people's ears perk up when they, when they see something like that. So it's just an idea. Lori?
Um, I probably would, um, be more along the lines of Bob that it probably, it's not gonna get anybody out of the chair to come in there. But when they come in, they're mad at the gal on the counter. If she says, well, I, I can waive the fee for you. Well, it might grease a little bit there.
Yeah, see, that would be an implementation, a really good idea.
Yeah.
Jeff, did you?
I really don't have much to add to that. Um, I, I've been in the development side of this process for a long time. Many of us have. And if you haven't been through it, um, it's hard to predict.
I wouldn't want to beat the girl at the counter. Let's put it that way.
Yeah. Okay, I'm getting negative vibes from three. Uh, how about, uh, or actually, and a concern from Roger, which is fine. Jason, did you have anything or Gretchen?
I, I'm all for it, Frank. I think it's a good idea. I think there's probably a lot of people that, you know, and that are in these wacky kind of situations that have just sort of thrown up their hands and said, oh, well, I'll just live with it. But maybe, maybe a little advertisement about the county paying attention to it and in fact incentivizing them a little bit to do it might, might, might get people out of their chair, I think. I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen. Okay, Jason?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm kind of agnostic on it. I kind of, I guess I'm, uh, just as cynical as Bob is, but, um, yeah, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to throwing it out there and see, you know, what movement gets out of, comes out of it, but, um, probably not gonna be a huge, huge thing. Um, yeah, I think more along the lines of having it in your back pocket to offer, or if you come to a point where you say, hey, we're gonna start choosing certain P, you know, certain addresses that are trouble spot or have had issues in the past, and we're just gonna call them up, say, hey, you gotta do this. Normally there's a, a fee, but we're gonna waive it for you because, uh, we wanna help you get this done. You know, maybe throwing it in at that point as a, hey, we need to do this. Um, but, you know, we'll, we'll help you by waiving the fee if you'll help us by, you know, going through the process. So, um, it probably, because I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to bet a lot of money that there's less than a fraction of a percent of people that have any idea that there is a cost to this or that this is a problem or anything. So I don't even know who would hear about it and jump out to do it. So.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm willing to pull my idea and, um, staff has certainly heard all of this. So if they wanted to try to do something internally, that's up to them. So, okay. All right, next, um, item for the transmittal. Lori, did you want to add your idea?
Yeah, I would want to put some type of suggestion that, that, um, there's a, a policy developed at the county for assisting, uh, somebody seeking to develop uh, three lots or more that would assist them in getting this moved in a timely manner.
Yeah, I would hate to see one person or, you know, a small group of people that maybe have a vendetta against somebody developing, you know, that could actually thwart or hold up or, you know, cancel a proposed development. So I think that would be good.
Well, it, the, the whole exercise seems extremely unlikely to go successfully in very many circumstances. Likely, not very many. So, um, any assistance that the county can do would be, would be good because they've got more clout to, to just have it be done.
So Mindy, uh, do you have any recommendation as far as you would like for Lori or the commission to provide some wording for the transmittal? Or do you know what is being suggested? And would you like to put something together?
Yeah, I'm happy to write up a draft and then send it out before our next meeting. And then you guys can approve it or, or amend it at the next meeting as you want. And then we'll, then we'll get it signed. So, um, this, this is a staff recommended code change. We don't have a deadline. We don't have to speed through this. Um, unlike many of the things I bring before you where I'm like, we gotta go. Um, this is something that, that staff has brought up, uh, because of the life safety issue. So.
You could even come up with some type of a, um, handout or something when, you know, it's, it's, we're making it sound like the people are gonna be rushing in, but there're not gonna be very many people-
This is gonna be very-
A handout that would explain. And in that handout, say, you know, well, you, you don't have to approve it for your road, but if, you know, Grandma Mary at the end of the road dies of a heart attack waiting for the ambulance, they're gonna be sending you a letter.
Yeah. So, so what I would be putting in the transmittal letter is the recommendation that staff develop policies and procedures to ensure that it's done in a timely fashion and does not hold up approval of this. That is what we would put in the transmittal letter. What it actually looks like is something will work out with staff. And that's where I'm recommending to you, if you want to follow along and see that we do have a, a process team that we will take these things back to, to have that conversation. And those are open up to the public. So we're happy to give you, you know, the link to it so you can pop in.
Hey, Jeff?
Is there any reason why the, the, excuse me, the residents can't get together on their little neighborhood road now that's, uh, you know, 139 dash seven and, and just pick a name and change it now?
They can right now, anytime you want.
They can.
Absolutely.
For a $35 fee.
And we would love that.
Well, Brett, but perhaps, going back to the carrot and stick, I really think that's the best way. At least get a few of these sort of under our belt, uh, and taken care of in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Roger, Jason or Gretchen?
So I will, um, make sure that your packet for the next one includes a draft transmittal letter and we can discuss it at the next, the next meeting.
Um, knowing that I'll be gone for a couple of meetings, um, so since there's no hurry on it, can I wait until I get back?
I'll leave that up to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, to approve the transmittal letter, um, Frank's gonna be out of country for a little while. So, um, so I guess it's up to you guys if you want, um.
Yeah, I'll have email, but, um, I was just wondering, you know, since there's no hurry on it, you know, could we wait until we get back? But if not, that's fine. Can we do it before I leave on the 28th? You know, could we vote by email, you know?
Yeah, you don't really have to vote in a transmittal letter. So, yeah, the transmittal letter does not take a vote. Um, Oftentimes, you guys don't have more to say beyond what has been put into the motion. And so the transmittal letter is very basic. There's only been these few circumstances where you have had additional information to add. If, if you're comfortable with, I send it out, you guys reply back and it seems like there's common agreement. Nobody, you know, nothing gets raised. We're like, oh, shoot, we better talk about it. You don't have to vote on it. We can put a final in front and you can come sign it. You know, I, I will never put in a transmittal letter something that isn't your guys' information because it's really yours. I mean, the other thing you guys can do, we've never done this, but you're welcome to do it, is you guys, you know, two of you who are really interested in this, you can get together and write the transmittal letter. I can give you the template. It is actually your letter. I just do it on your behalf. I don't even have.
That's the way you get the big wins and I get.
Yeah.
But I don't have to. If, if two of you would like to do it, go for it.
We don't want to get that started.
Well, if we, if we could provide consensus by email, I think that that would be good. And then I could sign it.
Yeah, we just can't, we can't create a serial meeting. So what I can do is I can send it out and I can say, if anybody has any edits, give them back to me. So you won't be talking to each other. You'll just be sending edits back to me. You'll just have to trust me that if, that I'm seeing that everybody doesn't have any big issues, right? If I do see a big issue, I will let you know.
Mindy, can I ask a quick question? In the past, you've told us that even if we, even if there's one person who has something to say outside of the transmittal letter, that can absolutely be entered in, in the, in the comments. We don't really need to, we don't need a consensus to add a little nuance to this, do we? We can just say, and two board members bought this and that's that. It's not, doesn't have to be voted on, does it?
No, it does not need to be voted on. We have agreed in the past to do the majority minority, right? So the rural housing alternative had a majority and a minority opinion in it, which is a perfectly valid and good approach to doing it. It can, it can also simply be, here are the other things the commissioners discussed. We don't have to put valuation on them. We don't have to say, everybody agreed to this, but only a few of them agreed to this. We could just say, here's a list of the other things that were discussed and why. And the commissioners can take that as they want.
I think that's a great idea, Gretchen. Yeah, I like that.
Just put them in, it's just list out, we've, so the list of conversations is make sure the policies and procedures are timely. Consider waiving.
Mine back on the table then.
So it would just be a list of, here's what we talked about.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I think.
Thank you, Gretchen.
And then I can come in on the 27th to sign it.
I'll, I'll do my best to get it out pretty quickly since you want to do it before we, before you go.
If that's fine.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. All right, are there any items from staff for good of the order?
Yes, a couple of items. One of the items we wanted to check in is the timeline for providing materials in advance of the meeting. So what we typically do is you get the meetings, you get the materials. They end up being 10 days in advance. So it's the two Fridays before we get the materials out. We are going to, we're going to lose our clerk for a couple of months. I don't know if you've noticed, but Megan is going to be out on parental leave for a few months. And Katie is going to be taking, doing both roles. We were wondering if it would be okay if the materials came to you, not that Friday, but the, like the Monday, Tuesday. So you'd end up with, instead of 10 days, you'd end up with seven to eight days. Is that okay? Will that work? Megan, does that sound like, okay? So that way we can, we still, we want to get things in, in front of you guys, obviously, in advance. But this would just allow some wiggle room for the situation.
It doesn't matter. We, we get it and we read it on date number nine anyway. We give it a quick perusal.
On the way here.
There, there is some truth to that, but I actually do read, I actually am bored sometimes and I open them right then and, and read it. But I guess the most important thing about any change is that those dates become whatever those dates become. I've really gotten accustomed to seeing the documents and then knowing, oh, I don't have a meeting tonight. That's the document night.
No, I definitely want time to, you know, I mean, I was being.
But they need to be as much as they can. If it goes to Monday, then for that three or four months, let's be Monday.
Okay, we will be consistent and we'll consider, the same messaging that Megan has always sent out is what you'll get. So it'll be, you have a meeting on X date, which is still out in the future. Here's your attached. And then you'll get the reminder that pops up that says you have a meeting. And then you'll get the reminder that says you have a meeting today. Don't forget, it's today.
Nobody, yeah, nobody needs to reinvent the wheel while she's gone. Use the same documents, same.
Yep, we'll use the same, the same everything. We just needed to give some more space to get them. So thank you. My other good of the order is you may also have heard that Lee is retiring, our lovely director. I wanted to let you guys know that there is a open to the public retirement party that is going to happen here in this room on Wednesday, want to say the right date. Wednesday, May 29th at 11:30 a.m. So it's a luncheon time. Yep, so if you want to come. Sorry.
You can still yell at me in the early morning hours and walking my dogs.
Well, you could do what I did, make her a peach cobbler, take her to the office.
Oh, yes, we love treats. Yeah, so again, that's Wednesday, May 29th at 11:30 a.m. here in this room. And it's light refreshments and it's open. It's a Wednesday. Yep. And it's open to the public. So if you want to come, we'd love to see you guys here, county managers. The 28th, the day before. Yeah.
I hate, I hate that I'm going to miss it.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any items from the planning commissioners for good of the order? I won't repeat mine. Okay, the next planning commission meeting will be on May 28th. And the agenda items will be an update on the comprehensive plan. Staff, are there any other items for that meeting?
Not at this time, but I am hoping that this one is going to get a little on the technical side. So I believe we'll have our land capacity analysis ready to review, which is a pretty techie document. So it could be a lot of brain, a lot of brain stuff.
Okay, we'll tee Jason up for that meeting. Okay, all right. Are there any commissioners that will not be present at that meeting? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.